I'd like to call to order the village board meeting of Monday, October 16th, 2017. We'll open with a silent prayer meditation. Please join in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mayor Berman?
Here.
And Trusty Gavino?
Here.
Trusty Lowry?
Here.
Trusty Curtis?
Here.
Trusty Carroll?
Here.
Trusty Martinez?
Here.
Audience comments. Raoul Abrego?
Yeah.
Would you like to speak to us?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Raoul Abrego and I live at 83 Pine Hill Drive in the Oak Hill subdivision. We've had issues with flooding on our street pretty much from day one, 19 years ago roughly, when we moved there. We discovered the subdivision was being built and it had tarps covering all the manholes. So my neighbor and I, a lady across the street, she's since moved us here and we were poking holes in the tarps to let the water out. Well, the subdivision's been done about 18, 19 years now. We still haven't flooded. It floods every year. And Saturday I was out there with a rake trying to get the leaves out, drained because it's right in front of my house. And a vehicle came by and they drove like idiots on that cul-de-sac. And the wave hit me, threw me back. Luckily, I was holding on to the rake, so I was able to stand up. But that flooding problem goes on every year. Nobody does nothing. I brought a, I don't know who I talked to today about it. They came to look, said, "Why didn't they put drains in the cul-de-sac on Prairie Court?" None. So all the water from there drains right down with the leads and everything. Then I looked around on Pine Hill, there's no drains there either. Until you get close to about a third of the way around the cul-de-sac. I mean, the drive. That is really bad planning. I don't know whoever planted it, they must have been drinking something because, man, it's an embarrassment. And I also talked to the person, I don't know who it was. And I said, "You know what they need is a speed bump because they drive like idiots there." And it's pretty much the younger folks. And somebody's gonna get hurt. It's gonna be a child. Until something happens like that, nobody's gonna take action. So I thought, well, why don't they put a speed bump from this area to the other area to slow those vehicles down? Because they drive. And I even seen school buses go pretty fast through there, too. You know? So I don't know what can be done. That's why I decided to come to this meeting. I've never been to one, so I don't know if I'm saying the right words or if I'm getting mad or anything like that. But it should be addressed. Because somebody's gonna get hurt. And I'm sure I'm not the only one. I'm just a small piece in that subdivision. So you put all the other problems in North Aurora, it could be bad. I mean, somebody's gotta stand up and, you know, take responsibility. I grew up in Aurora. Been, I lived in Aurora for about 55 years, then we moved up here to North Aurora. Made a big change. The only reason I changed because the models had air condition. They just bought it, you know? And we've been here ever since. So I was, I remember when this was an old mill, you know? And it was nice, you know? North Aurora was nice. But now they're getting kind of fancy and they're forgetting things that should be looked at. If they're short of manpower, hire some more. And there was three girls or ladies. Those girls deserve recognition. I can't think of their names, but they put a flagpole for the hydrant on my, what do you call it? Hydrant. Because the contract workers that was doing the Prairie Court drove his truck all the way down the street into that hydrant and he almost hit it. So they put a flag on it, then the second girl painted it, and a third person put stainless steel bolts in it. They deserve recognition. They are awesome. I think they ought to be on the board, you know? But that's my feelings. I'm sorry if some of you guys might not like it, but something has to be done. You know, like I said, I'm only a small section of that section in North Aurora. So I'm sure this whole village has a lot more issues, too, probably more important. But I had to say what I could. All right? Thank you.
Very good. Very good, Raoul. You know, we thank you very much for coming to meetings and stating your feelings. We don't know what's, you know, what you really feel unless you come here and tell us and we're interested. I think that, you know, everything you've mentioned has probably got a reason for it being the way it is technically, engineering-wise and everything else about the streets and how they move and whether we want, whether you want more of a technical edge or not. But you mentioned the girls taking care of something that they felt was necessary at a time. You certainly can call the village hall and let us know about those things going on on a day-to-day basis that, when you see it. The other thing, you're talking about your storms who are not being, well, initially they're covered because we don't own the sewer system until we take over a subdivision. And then we uncover them and you can use them. But the thing is, and we all have to do this, if the, in front of our home, if it's blocking up and you know that the water's not running because it's, there's leaves in it, there's two things you can do. Number one, you can go out and clean it yourself if you're able to. And number two, you can call the village hall and we'll send somebody out to do it. So that's the way we have. Steve, do you have a comment?
Yes, just a couple of quick ones. When there are big storms coming, we do typically go to areas that we know have street flooding, which of course, street flooding isn't house flooding. It's, streets sometimes are designed to take water from overland flow routes to ponds and whatnot when there's seven inches of rain in a day, which is what we had. But what we do is, we know that there are some areas that back up more than others, so we do go and clean those catch basins by the sewers to keep them open as best as possible. Brian Richter was out there today and did speak with the gentleman. So I think at this point, what we would do is typically, John being our public works director and engineer, what I would do is I would have him maybe look at the subdivision plan, just give it a once-over, make sure that the drainage looks like it's still working efficiently the way it was designed. And then he can contact the resident, be in touch and go from there.
Some of that design of the streets was for the water to flow down to the area where they are. And there were some homes that have swales between them and that's designed that way for the water to get to the area. We can't have, I guess, openings, you know, every three feet to catch the water. It'd be nice if we could afford to do that, but we have to do otherwise. Yes, sir?
The only trouble is, we're located in a valley. So the water from the top of the hill there and this other side all come down. It's like been like that ever since we moved.
I think-
One other thing is, they were supposed to fix a pothole around the drain. I still haven't seen nobody. Some guy came out today, looked at it, and said, "Do you know what's happening underneath that road there? You see bubbles coming up." "Who are they?" "A lot." He said, "Well, what's happening underneath that asphalt is deteriorating and eventually it's gonna drop." And I get always a little teed off, I tell the guy, says, "You know, if somebody was to get hurt because of the ground, all the dirt's being washed away somewhere, I would hold the village responsible for it."
Well, as long as somebody was out there today, we've seen it and we know what to do with it, so we thank you very much.
You could literally shit. Last night or Saturday, nobody came back, nobody.
Yeah, one of the things, this rain that we had was, I think, close to 100-year rain. And I think everything is pretty much designed for 100-year rain. So, you know, whether we have 100-year rain every two years or every five years or two a year, it's still whatever's designed for. So we can't control how much comes down, but the only thing we can do is say, well, if it's gonna be so much, we can design it to handle that to the best we can.
Eventually it's gonna drop.
All right.
It might not be in my time because I'm 71 and I see pretty much everything that's in the good and the bad.
So have I.
This area was a little mill. I loved it.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
We'll have John contact the resident tomorrow morning and then we'll go from there.
Okay, good. Any other audience comments? Trustee comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I actually prepared something just based on the events of today. I'd first like to start off by saying, in light of the recent events that took place this morning on 88 and Orchard, I want to thank our first responders for the quick action today. It's really disheartening that this tragedy happened in our village. That said, it's become increasingly apparent that the city of Aurora is having some issues with, you know, whether it's gang-related violence or whatever it is. And everything I've seen on social media and in the paper is saying that this was somehow gang-related and the crash was related to a shooting between the two vehicles. Now, I don't want to speak prematurely before all the facts come in. But, and I've said this before and I'm gonna say it again, I'd like to restate my concern for our children who have to go into the city of Aurora, specifically to West Aurora High School. And I'd like to see and know and see an outline or something, what steps are being taken to make sure our children are protected from these, you know, ever-increasingly occurring incidents and those that are causing them to occur. The safety of our kids to and from school should be the utmost importance to, you know, our public safety committees, our public safety responders. So another thing that really disheartened me was, it seems like this incident started all the way on the east side of Aurora around Conan and ended with the crash on 88. And all the comments I had read, no one mentioned police in pursuit or any first responders up until the crash actually happened. Which, when I hear that, isn't instilling a lot of confidence in me in the city of Aurora that they're able to handle these incidents? And it seems like they're just happening more and more often. I know we can't control what's happening there, but, and I'll direct this to Chief Fisher, I mean, we really need to make sure that our kids are safe. My daughter could have been driving home from West, you know, at 11 o'clock this morning, God forbid if she got sick or something, and could have got shot at or could have been at the scene or could have witnessed it. So when we're seeing these things now affecting, you know, where our children are going to school in those areas, in those neighborhoods, everything I saw said they were shooting down Indian Trail Road, which is how my daughter goes to school. I just really need to know that our kids are gonna be safe. And not only that, but I mean, North Aurora has always had a perception of an inferior school district. Well, now you add crime in those areas and it's just not gonna end well. So I'd like to see if we can have some sort of a partnership with the city of Aurora, the school district or something, and acknowledgement of what's been going on in Aurora with the gang issues and maybe have some sort of a plan or program in place to protect North Aurora kids.
I agree about the first responders getting to the scene and taking care of it. I will limit my comments on the accident and over here because of this. The accident itself happened, did not happen in our jurisdiction. The North Aurora Police did not handle that accident. That happened on the bridge, so it's the Kane County Sheriff, actually. So I will withhold certain comments because I don't want to overstep my bounds with any investigation they have going on with it. I know the news and probably social media, which I'm not a part of, all said North Aurora. I did see a quick clip on it tonight before I came to the meeting that labeled it as North Aurora. It was actually, and it was not within the city limits or the village limits of North Aurora, it was the Kane County Sheriff's Office. We did go and assist, of course, because it affected our part of Orchard Road because I know they shut it down for a while. As far as the shooting itself, where it started, I have not heard exactly. You mentioned Conan, it very well could have. To get from Conan Avenue, I don't know how they exact, the route they took to get where they ended up over at 88 and Orchard would only take a few minutes, probably, especially if they were chasing each other like what I had heard. By time somebody were to call the police and they get in the area, they probably had made it to where they were at, I'll be honest with you. And unless somebody calls or a police officer happens to be directly in the area, you know, we're not gonna know about it or, in that case, Aurora or the sheriff's office isn't gonna know about it. This is one of those unfortunate, I'll call it a random act of violence that unfortunately we see more of nowadays. I have kids that go to the same school that your kids go to as well, and of course, I'm concerned about it. But knowing the Aurora Police Department the way I do and the people down there, they have about as good a handle on any gang issues that you can have. I know they have an officer in the school. I know that they have a dedicated gang unit that is aware of the gang members and who they are. I mean, this is not typical when it happens in the middle of the day. You know, nobody can really explain what goes through their heads when they do it. They see somebody and they just take action. They do not think about it. But as far as the school goes, I know for a fact they have officers in the area all the time because I hear them, you know, go out at the school, they're doing what they call direct patrol in the area of the school. I've been over there at different times of the day and I've seen them over there.
Not to interrupt, my concern's not what's going on in the school, it's what's going on around the school. And when I'm looking at the paper almost on a weekly basis and I'm seeing the police reports and the crime and the shootings that are going on, and it's happening more frequently on the west side now as well as the east side, I just want to make sure that, because we have kids driving to school at 6:30 in the morning, staying till 6:30 at night, 10 o'clock at night, you know, my daughter leaves various times because she's in a special program for her CNA and she'll now be driving to different locations in Aurora. I'm just concerned that this is getting a little out of hand, the more I see it. And maybe it's just my perception because it's becoming more publicized, but I just want to be proactive so that we don't, you know, going forward, we don't have our kids getting involved in this.
Sure, we all do. And I do believe there's probably an increase. I don't want to speak out of turn for, you know, actual stats that Aurora keeps, but there probably is an increase as well as more media coverage of things, social media, things like that, so you do hear about it more. And yes, we do share a school district with them and of course, we want our students that travel to and from to be safe, but I have no doubt in my mind that the Aurora Police Department is doing everything that they can to stop that stuff. They want to have a safe town as much as we do. And unfortunately, we can't stop, you know, every single thing that goes on, the random acts of violence such as today. But, you know, and again, I can't speak for the Aurora Police Department. I can certainly speak to them and find out if there's anything going on that maybe I don't know about. But I know for a fact there are officers in the area, there's officers assigned to the school itself, of course. And I can't help but think that they have as much of a handle on some of the situations as they possibly can have. It's unfortunately that way in just about every jurisdiction is, I wish we could stop everything and know ahead of time what's going on, but unfortunately, we can't. So.
Well, thank you.
I had to drive at least three times through that intersection today and I was able to notice the North Aurora squad cars over there. I just want to say, I mean, I take pride in what I do and I like to go through and say, "Thank you," you know, "thank you for your efforts." Because as you said, this wasn't even in within our jurisdiction, but our teams were there. You know, and our teams were there building relationships and helping not only our people in North Aurora, but people in Aurora itself and every effort that we can. So I do understand how sometimes interacting situations like this can be conflictive and whose jurisdiction it happened, where it came from. And the thing is, we were there. And I appreciate every effort from our local law enforcement to assist everyone else out there because at the end of the day, it's affecting our community. So thank you, Chief.
Any other comments? Consent agenda.
Most approved.
Second.
Discussion. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Trusty Gavino?
Yes.
Trusty Lowry?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
And Trusty Martinez?
Yes.
Under new business, item number one, Mr. Bosco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one is the creation of a liquor license to allow salons and similar uses to be able to sell beer and wine at their facilities while they give their hairdressing and other types of services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Lowry?
Yes.
Trusty Gavino?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
And Trusty Martinez?
Yes.
Item number two, Mr. Bosco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two is an ordinance amending the North Aurora Liquor Code to increase the number of Class E licenses by one as the BP on 31 would like to now sell liquor. So we need to create a liquor license class for them to be able to do that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Trusty Lowry?
Yes.
Trusty Gavino?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
Trusty Martinez?
Yes.
And item number three, Mr. Toth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three is approval of a resolution approving a community sign program for North Aurora. This item is on first read tonight. This had not gone to a committee discussion. The reason being is we're looking to move forward with the community sign. This community sign program would allow us to move forward with such without having to get a variance from the sign ordinance. But when the sign ordinance was adopted in 2005, there were parameters established for a community sign program that would cover our entryway signs, informational signs, directional signs. So basically, we're doing, since it has not been enacted yet, we're actually proposing the resolution tonight that would enact the community sign program guidelines in the sign ordinance. As an exhibit in the resolution, you'll see that there are parameters. We did add additional parameters for the community informational sign, which would be 10 feet and 100 square feet. That would cover the actual sign for the community sign at 31 in state and also, too, if we do a village hall sign. The community identification signs would cover the 10 signs, identification signs and entryway signs in the village. The temporary signs would allow for the village to display banners for community events and things like that. Directional signs would be identifying points of interest. Now, in the original sign program, it denotes that organizations have the ability to kind of come in and petition the board. I left it open right now, we're open for interpretation or discussion, if you will, that organizations can come in and have an application and have the approval of the administrator to put up a sign. We've done a couple so far, I think for a couple religious institutions and golf courses. So again, this allows, this program allows the village to kind of go above and beyond and it's in doing so is provide adequate information to the residents and citizens of the village. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
Trusty Martinez?
Yes.
Trusty Gavino?
Yes.
Trusty Lowry?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
No old business, village president's report, nothing to report this evening, committee reports. Trusty comments? Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. We had our first local government 101 class last Thursday. Went pretty good considering that the Cubs were playing. We still had over 20 people show up, so that was exciting. We have, one of our attendees is actually in the audience tonight. So I think the class went well. This week will be our second class and it'll be Dave Fisher of the Police Department. The chief will be presenting with some of his staff. The second thing I wanted to bring up was the Silo Project. I'll just update the board on where we were at with that. We interviewed the four finalists last week and I'll be honest with you, most of those companies are right at the top, so it's been really tough. Internally, right now, we're still working through who had the best presentation because all of them easily could do the job. It's a matter of who's the best fit at this point because they're all very capable companies. So it's going in a good direction. That should go to Cow on the 6th of November for a decision with the final company choice. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, in regards to your 101 class, I was intrigued by the number of questions asked, so I think that maybe we can get feedback to the board of those questions that have been asked by those attending because I think they're important. And it's obviously, it's information for our strategic planning also.
We had, just for the board, we had, at the beginning of the meeting, I asked if anyone had questions that they wanted to get answered at some point during the course to write them down on a piece of paper. And at the end, when everyone turned them in, when all was said and done, I think we had 37 questions, which is great, you know? And a lot of them are, some are real basic and some are more complicated, but that means that there were some real interested people, so that's good. So we're working on responses to those and then whatever doesn't get responded to will be worked into the actual presentations.
Sounds very good. Any comments? Mr. Attorney.
No report.
Fire District not here. Village Department reports. Mr. Hannah, Finance.
Really quick, just wanted to note that we're wrapping up our audit and production of our comprehensive annual financial report that will be presented at the next village board meeting. Overall, just general notes, we finished in the black for the general fund again last year. Overall, we had very balanced financial operations and we're maintaining our strong financial position. So we'll have the full report and presentation next board meeting.
Very good, sir. Community development, Mr. Toth?
Yeah, at the September Development Committee meeting, D.R. Horton presented a concept plan regarding the Fox Valley Golf Course. Since then, we've worked with the developer and they've actually submitted another concept plan for review. And as let the board know, we will bring it forward to the community of the whole on November 6th. So that's coming forward for next week's, next meeting.
Very good. Police, Chief Fisher?
No report, sir.
Public Works, Mr. Laskowski?
No report.
No report? No executive session, I take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our Committee of the Whole meeting will start in a minute or two. So I'd like to call to order the North Aurora Committee of the Whole Meeting on Monday, October 16th, 2017. We'll start with the roll call.
Mayor Berman?
Here.
Trusty Gavino?
Here.
Trusty Lowry?
Here.
Trusty Curtis?
Here.
Trusty Carroll?
Yeah, here.
Trusty Martinez?
Here.
All right. Our first item for discussion, Mr. Hannah?
Thank you. I have a short PowerPoint presentation put together tonight to go over the 2017 property tax levy. Is it all on your monitors up there? Okay. Is it?
No.
No?
Maybe it helped turn it on.
How are we looking now?
Very good.
Good? Okay. All right. We thought this would be better than walking through a six-page memo with lots of charts and graphs, so I promised I'll be brief and kind of hit the highlights and kind of describe what our 2017 property tax levy estimate might look like. So if you have any questions, please let me know. So as the board is aware, property taxes represent about 19% of all general fund revenues. So as the board is aware, property taxes represent about 19% of all general fund revenues. They're one of our key revenue sources to fund basic services. And they're also a good inelastic revenue source, meaning they're not subject to sales tax, the fluctuations in the economy like sales taxes and income taxes are. Our total property tax extensions were 2.3 million last year. You can kind of see the breakdown there with the chart. Most of that goes towards our police pension trust fund and corporate fund to fund general services. So that's kind of essentially where the money goes, so to speak, when we're talking about our property tax levy and property tax extensions. And as the board knows, this upcoming levy in December will actually fund next year's budget for fiscal year 2018 and 19. Also, as the board is aware, the village is subject to PTEL, which is the property tax extension limitation law as dictated by state statute. We cannot, per the law, we cannot increase our extensions by more than CPI or 5%, whichever is less. And so for this year, the CPI factor was 2.1%. We are allowed to capture any increases in our EAV due to new construction or other factors that may arise, such as TIF recovery. The one thing with this CPI and new construction factors is that we cannot defer it and maybe catch up in the future years. So the PTEL law and state law really provide the village with no flexibility in regards to that. So this is a quick summary of our total extensions from last year. This is sort of an illustration of what the 2.1% CPI factor might look like in terms of additional extensions, what the amount for new construction would be, and then the total possible extensions, which would be about a 2.54% more than last year. So about $58,000 in total. So kind of breaking down a little bit as far as our EAV. Our total 2017 projected EAV is to be about 506 million. So as you can see, I'm trying to get my little pointer to work here, but it's not. It's really essentially the fourth straight year of increases that we've had since the recession. We're estimated to have an increase in value of about 3.5% for new prop, for current property. Now, that does not impact our tax extensions at all. That's just existing property and the average increase on that. But we are looking at an estimated new construction EAV of about 2.1 million. And I'll show you an illustration of what that looks like as far as our tax levy. So this chart shows what the new construction EAV has been for the last several years and the estimated, or the dollars generated by that new construction. So the new construction, about 2.1 million, provide about, only about a $10,000 additional property tax extension. So really not a lot. You can see we had, we had a big sort of increase the last several years when kind of ratcheting down to where we were previously in the previous five or six years. So the amount of new construction is going to vary, obviously, on an annual basis based on what development's happening within the village. So that's new construction. And just a quick note on CPI. Again, we've had, as we've discussed before, really low CPI factors for the last several years. You can see the average has been around 2% or even close to 1% over a rolling three-year average basis. So this 2.1% that we're looking at for this upcoming levy is actually the highest it's been in about five years. So that kind of shows you the low inflation that has been going on and really is kind of expected to keep going on in the near future. So again, this is the same chart I showed you earlier, just kind of walked through each of those three components with our new construction, $10,000. CPI of 2.1% should be $48,000 for an overall increase of 2.54%. So these show the actual levies by the village by component versus last year. So most of these stay the same or pretty close to the same. The two big differences are corporate levy, which goes from about 660,000 to 600,000. That's just for general purposes and general fund. And the biggest increase would be on our police pension side from 956,000 to about 1,047. The overall levy would remain about the same, about 2.4 or 5 million if that's the levy that's chosen to be adopted by the Village Board. So just a couple of quick notes on our police pension valuation. I know that was included in the packet. Obviously, property taxes are necessary to fund our police pension trust fund. The amount that goes towards the police pension has increased the last several years for various reasons, from about 26% of our total extensions to about 43% of the total tax levy extension. So this has resulted in a sort of a net decrease, if you will, of property tax revenue that remains in the general fund to fund services and operations. So we did include the annual valuation in the packet as of June 1st, 2017. There's been several assumptions that have been changed over the years. Two of the changes this year is recommended by the actuary and these were actually discussed by the Finance Committee at the July 10th meeting. One was to change our salary increase assumption from a flat 5% per year to a table based on years of service and said would change over the life of the officer. So that was one of the major changes done with the actuary evaluation this year. And the other was to lower the payroll growth rate assumption from 5% to 3% based on experience. And the practical effect of that is that you're seeing an initial increase in the payment of our unfunded pension liabilities and the amortization of those liabilities over the remaining 25 years. So essentially, what the effect is, is an initial bump and increase in the repayment of that obligation, but then the annual increases for that obligation are much less and sustainable going forward.
Phil?
Yes?
You know, that's a huge jump in such a short period of time. You know, if we continue on that trajectory, it's going to be unsustainable. I mean, first of all, A, what happened and B, how do we stabilize this?
Well, like I said before, we've had several different changes to some assumptions over the years that needed to be updated.
But a 25% increase in three, four years? I mean, did we miss something?
Well, it's a cumulative increase over the last several years. So we had updates to, you know, our mortality rates, turnover rates. We had a modification to our investment assumption a few years back from 7.5% to 7%. So while it is, looks like it's a big increase over the last three or four years, given some of the adjustments we've had to go through and some of the conversations we've had with our actuary, it's really sort of a necessary, necessary path so that we can kind of get on the right track. And then I would anticipate we'd have fewer large increases in the future, so.
We're almost at 50%. I mean, that's, that's a huge slice of our property tax take in.
Yeah.
I mean, at some point, we're going to be basically charging people taxes to fund one service.
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure I'm understanding what you're saying to make sure that we're not going forward in that.
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah. And one of the things I was going to illustrate is that we did make some progress last year in reducing our unfunded pension liability. And so some of the previous years was a result of the recession. So a lot of times, when you have those really, really negative investment returns for one or two years, those get sort of smoothed out over a five-year period. So you're constantly recognizing one-fifth of that, you know, investment gain or loss over the next five years. And so it kind of takes, you know, it kind of takes a hit, so to speak, and then you have to kind of play catch-up a little bit, so.
Well, we also know it's something that affects every community.
Right.
And I think there's some legislation that's being proposed to do things differently in the state, so it could come, come up to help us in the, in the future, so we'll see.
So just a couple of other points on that. Last year, we had investment experience about 9.46% versus our assumption of 7%. So again, this, we had a very positive year. Our salary increases were less than the assumption of 5%. They're just a shade over 2. Obviously, the board's been committed to 100% funding goal by 2040 per resolution. Our net position as a percentage of our total pension liability went from 58% to 63%. So that's, you know, another bit of good news. And our net pension liability decreased from about 10 million to about 9.3 million. And that liability, as we've discussed the last couple of years, that actually gets recorded in our basic financial statements now as a long-term liability per the Gatsby standards that came out a few years ago. So there was definitely some progress made. And I think, you know, part of that's, you know, some of the stuff that went on with the plan. You know, I think part of it is also, you know, the contributions that the village has made and the additional contributions the village has made over the last several years, you know, to get to that point. At this point, it looks like over the last four years, the village has committed and contributed additional $575,000 in contributions toward the police pension fund. So there's definitely been some progress made over the last few yards, few years in regards to that, and I think the village can be very proud of that, too. So this is the last slide. It's kind of just a summary of where the property tax extensions go and kind of a little thread or history there, based on our liability insurance needs, police pension fund, the general fund. Just a couple of other factors that we've mentioned in the past. I know Steve's mentioned, I mentioned them. You know, there's been a lot of proposals to freeze property taxes over the years. There certainly was a lot of discussion over the last, you know, 12 months, 18 months regarding that. We are dealing with a 10% reduction this current fiscal year in income tax revenue due to what was passed by the state. We don't know if that's going to happen again next year. We'll kind of wait and see on that. The levy as proposed would really be, depending on the homeowner's, you know, assessed value, just $5 to $7 additional annual impact to the average homeowner. As the board is aware, property taxes, you know, the total property tax bill is around 6% goes to the village, 6 to 7%. So it's really a small portion in regards to the total property tax bill. That would continue to just give us, you know, flexibility in addressing our needs and priorities. And finally, we have included information from the library, what they approved for their levy and that we have to approve in our custodial fashion. We're still discussing our special service areas and those will be presented at a discussion at a later date as far as what those special service area levies need to be. So sorry if I took a little bit too long, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to ask them.
I think I should point out really quick that Bill touched on the 10% reduction in income tax on the state. To put a dollar amount, that's close to $200,000. So I want to make sure that that 10%, that you don't think it's just 10%. It actually equates to quite a bit of money from us.
So the next steps would be formal approval of an estimate, just an estimate, at the November 6th Village Board meeting as addressed in the packet unless the board would like to discuss any other options.
Well, I'd like to say, you know, one of the bullet points on this page talks about our flexibility in addressing needs and priorities. And while I appreciate that, we do have a little bit of wiggle room in the budget and we've been able to do that and make enhancements with things like our logo and signage and things like that, at some point, where is our cushion becoming a little bit maybe excessive? I mean, I'm always for, you know, we shouldn't be taxing people if we don't need to be taxing people. I don't like the fact that the state of Illinois holds us hostage like this. However, I, you know, I have noticed a lot of surrounding municipalities are not taking that increase. And at some point, we maybe need to take a step back and say, "Okay, we can't recapture it, but we can still, we're still getting revenue." And at what point is enough enough to have this flexibility?
Well, you know.
Well, I mean, that's a good question. That's something we discussed internally. I think, you know, with all the different things going on there, just the cost of providing services, you know, funding our obligations, sort of the state hanging over our heads like they have the last several years, it kind of puts us in a, in a tough, tough situation there. So we feel this is probably the best thing to do at this time and, you know, something we'll keep looking at going forward.
I always try to remind people that when they ask me about taxes, I remind them about the things that you pay for in addition to taxes, such as your water bill. And it's not that we may never raise water rates. We might next year, we don't know. We haven't talked about that yet, but we haven't raised water rates in almost eight years. So the amount that some towns raised their water rates on would equate to more than what you would pay in tax increase for the entire year in a two-month water bill. So that's something to be said, too, is that, okay, so other towns might be charging $5, $6 for a thousand gallons, we're charging $3.55 for a thousand gallons. So residents might be paying $5 to $7 more in their taxes for the year, but they might be paying $5 less a month in water than they normally would, which is $60 a year in another town. So that's, I just want to make sure that's clear. We haven't raised water rates in almost eight years. And to Bill's point, I mean, the LGDF, the income tax dropping $200,000 without notice. I mean, we always knew that that was a possibility, but that came right after our fiscal year started, so we immediately started $200,000 into hold this year, which is always fun. The one thing that we have done is when we've had financial flexibility, which we do have, we do throw that money towards the police pension so we can pay down those obligations. That's why we put the 575,000 down when we've had one-time incomes and then when we've had extra money at the end of the years of note. One thing Bill will tell you, too, is our double-A bond rating at times is tied into having a adequate reserve and typically 50 to 60% is what a lot of those funding agencies want to see to keep your bond rating high so they know that you can pay that debt should there ever be a catastrophic revenue issue. So it does. I mean, this goes through it back and forth. Some of the towns that don't take their increases offset the cost in other ways by raising sales taxes. That's something North Aurora has one of the lowest sales taxes in the region. So we haven't had any of those conversations. We're not asking to propose any additional taxes, just the property tax in the amount of the 2.1%.
Well, I think, you know, talking about the home rule communities also that may not be taking that amount on an annual basis, but at some point in time, without going to referendum, they can raise taxes to whatever they want. So, and I think we have seen that in the past. We've seen that in our neighbors and we can't do that. We can't raise taxes other than this. That's all we can raise, 2.1% of our little, which adds up to an increase of $5 to $7 per, per tax bill this year. So I think if you compare what we do to the home rule communities, those over 25,000 that, that do at times go out and increase their taxes without any vote, we're way ahead of the game, so.
That's a good point, Dale. I just want to also add, too, we're also one of the lowest in the area, if not the lowest, as far as our telecommunications taxes and utility taxes. Those all hover around the 3%, 4% range when typically most communities are at the maximum 5%, 6%. So just kind of one more thing to kind of throw into the big picture of, you know, taxes versus fees and all that.
You know, the beauty about, the other thing that, and the board should take all the credit for this because you're the one to pass the budget, our capital program is one of the strongest capital programs I've either been a part of or that I know of. And when people hear, dollar for dollar, what we spend in our capital on roads and water main and sewer lines, it's amazing how much that we're able to do. And I mean, we're putting double the amount of money per capita than some towns are doing in capital. So when you're talking about that type of financial stability, the ability to do that without raising taxes significantly, we should be proud of the fact that we're not going back and asking for referendums or in home rule cases where they just simply bond $12 million because they want to build more roads. We haven't had to do that because we are adequately budgeted and we keep that money in the bank the way we do. But of course, this is a board policy decision, so anything the board would like to discuss, we'll discuss with you.
Is that it? Got it, Bill?
That's it, sir.
Very good. Item number two, Mr. Bosco.
Item number two is the overlooked gazebo rentals. And this, it's the last time we got back, the board had directed staff to essentially just put a tiered system. And so I'm just going to, the nuts and bolts are this. We have an application for people who want to do weddings or ceremonies of that type or pitchers affiliated with weddings for a two-hour program. We put a fee in. I think the board had stated that they thought the fee that we had originally proposed, which was a deposit of $100, was too little. It was just enough if that to cover our expenses to clean the gazebo if we had to before an event. We have since raised the amount. Residents will now pay $150 fee and non-residents would pay $200. Essentially, that's it. So we put the non-resident versus resident fee in. We put 150 versus 200. And we did a little bit of research of other towns that have gardens or whatnot that they rent out for two-hour slots. And so we wanted to make sure that we were in line with them and not charging more than they were for, you know, if they had a bigger area. The other thing I will notice is in the policy guidelines, there is a mistake. The very first thing says, "We originally had a residency requirement," but obviously, if we're opening up this non-residence, we'll have to take that requirement out. So aside from that, everything else in the application in front of you is set to go. So aside from that, everything else in the application in front of you is set to go. If the board gives direction, then we'll move forward and internally, we'll start this process in the next few weeks.
I think what you propose is very good.
And we're not allowing alcohol, correct?
Correct, no alcohol.
Any comments, any other suggestions, or you have your marching papers?
I do.
Very good, sir. Item number three, Mr. Bosco, our community sign.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall...
Mike, can you put up the packet real quick, or Bill, and just put the picture of the sign up?
As you recall, we picked out community sign designs recently, and we picked one. I brought the stone in, we met with our builder, Western Remac, who brought stone in and color swatches, basically on the aluminum, the type of material that they would post the lettering on the sign. What happened was, we had a contract of not to exceed $70,000. As we were going to the board, and we had worked out the number, and the design was picked, it was slightly more than $70,000, they went back, they did some value engineering, and they said, okay, we can build your sign for $70,000. And as they were on the phone with me last week, they were telling me materials, and I said, wait a minute, you want to use two-inch-thick stone? I said, the sign has to be movable, how are you going to move a nine-foot-tall by 12-foot-wide sign that's made with real brick? I mean, that thing's going to be enormously heavy. And there was a miscommunication, the sign builder thought when we said movable sign, the most expensive singular part of the sign is the LED boards, they're about $30,000. So his thought was that we would just pick the LED boards up, because they can detach them from the sign and move it to another location and build another foundation around them. So with that, I said, before I go any further, I'm like, you have to give me an option to move this sign, what would it be if I wanted to move the sign, like the board said, hey, we'd like that a flexibility, that possibility? So what he said was, there's really two good answers. There is, we can build a really great sign that's probably never going to fall down because it's made out of solid brick around cinder blocks for $70,000, or we can build another $70,000 sign, but we pay $3,000 to $5,000 extra for a one-piece slab foundation that would be enormous, but it would be about a foot deep, it would go around the sign, they'd put hooks in it, bury them, and then five, 10, 15 years, if we ever decide to move the sign, they'd have to get a crane and move it. Now, the crane's no big deal, we've always said that if we move the sign, you need a crane to do it. The cost to move the sign is estimated at $5,000 to $10,000, because the enormous weight of that sign and that slab would be, like I said, so heavy, you'd have to have a humongous industrial crane and a flapper to truck it to wherever we wanted to do it. So the option in front of the board is really, I mean, there are multiple options, but the two that staff are proposing right now are basically, build the sign as is on the corner using the two-inch stone, the two-inch face stone, and just have it there, and know that we either never move the sign, or we detach it and basically take the foundation and rebuild the foundation somewhere else for $30,000, $20,000, $30,000 somewhere else. I want to make a point, that if we did the engineering option with the slab, you're talking $3,000 to $5,000 to build that special slab, plus the $5,000 to $10,000 cost to move the sign, you're talking $8,000 to $15,000 to make it a movable sign anyways. So the question is, do you, would you rather just build the sign with those materials, know that it's going to stay there, and leave it as is for now? Staff's recommendation, if we had one, would be that we could definitely build, any development in the future can be built around that sign, or we could actually incorporate it into a development, and staff is comfortable with that. Of course, if a developer has different ideas, we address it at that time and move the LED boards. Does anyone have any thoughts? Right now, I'm looking for direction on whether or not you want to spend the extra $3,000 to $5,000, build the sign as is with the face stone. I will mention that the cheaper material would be brick veneer, and from our understanding, the sheer size of the sign, even with brick veneer, would be so big that if you use brick veneer, you can use a metal brace in between, but if they were to crane that, it would probably crumble under its own weight, because that metal framing is only there to hold it up, it's not as strong to handle that kind of weight even in a move. So we'd have to go back to the drawing board and redesign a...
You know, I'd like to say that I wish all of this had come to light when we were even talking about the sign, because I think I recall I was kind of against even, why do we even need a sign? We've got a website, we've got Facebook, we've got a newsletter, and I know there's a certain population in the village that enjoys driving by and seeing what's going on via a sign, but this is an enormous expense and an enormous project for something that we may not know, is it going to be moved in a year, 10 years, five years? I'm just, I'm a little confused as to how this whole thing, all of a sudden now, it's going to cost us, you know, thousands, tens of thousands to move a sign that we had originally gone into the concept saying it needs to be able to be moved.
But the cost to move the sign was never in the price of the sign, it was always going to be an additional cost at some point to move a sign.
But why is the $3,000 to $5,000 extra our cost? Shouldn't they have given us a bid that it was going to be a movable sign? Why does the village have to eat that? Shouldn't that be their cost? I mean, isn't that what the original bill, is that what the bid calls for?
No, there were no specifics, there were no, there was no, in the proposals that we did when we interviewed companies, we just told them that it had to be a movable It wasn't specific to the foundation or anything like that, we left that up to the sign company to design that.
But the design that they've given us is not a movable sign, right?
Correct. So we can't go back to the drawing board on this, it's not necessarily the best idea, but we can't scale it back. The problem is, is making a smaller sign means you're shrinking the LED board, the whole point of the sign was to make it prominent so people could see it.
I just don't see why the village should have to incur that cost, why the contractors, if they messed up the bid, why they shouldn't be the one eating that cost?
They didn't mess up the bid.
It's not, yeah, like I said, it wasn't in the bid per se...
It was not specified that it should be movable.
Well, you just said it was supposed to be a movable sign.
It was, I think, like I said, to the mayor's point, what he was saying is that it wasn't specified specifically in the proposals that they received, to what standard movable, I guess, it was up for interpretation.
Is the current sign movable, considered a movable thing?
No.
Why do we want to move it, first of all?
Good question.
Well, in case somebody buys that corner lot, they might not want the big 10-foot village sign on their corner.
Well, that's the idea behind...
And the cost of developing that property, the amount of money that this sign is, is a drop in the bucket, I think.
Except those people are going to come to us and ask us for all kinds of, you know...
Concessions.
Concessions, and...
Well, they're going to do that anyway.
Well, right, but this is a $70,000 concession.
I can go back and figure something out with the foundation...
And it's probably going to be more than your $10,000, $15,000 to move the sign, because they probably have not given you how much it's going to cost to re-hook all that stuff up, rerun electricity to it, reset everything up. So, I mean, when you're looking at your $5,000 for your foundation, it's not $5,000, it's not, you know, another $10,000 to move it, it's going to be another $10,000 in addition to that, just to go through and move this thing anywhere else.
Well, I think build it, build it to remain. We have no idea how soon we're going to...
Are we really, I mean, let's do a cost-benefit analysis of this sign, I mean, do we really need to be spending $70,000 on a sign that, you know, unless you happen to drive by this corner, you're never going to see it? I just think there's a better way to get community information out that doesn't cost $70,000, that may be knocked down in a year, two, three, five, 10, we don't know. Either that, or, I mean, we need to put it someplace where it's never going to move. And I know we can't put it in front of the village hall, because it's going to cause an accident, no one's going to be able to read it, but do we have any other options throughout the village, someplace where we can put this thing that it's never going to move?
We can't write that into the agreement, that it's going to stay there and enhance that area maybe with some...
A developer agreement?
Other things.
Why can't we?
Yeah.
No, you can.
We're in control.
Because I think we all agree it's probably the best location as it stands.
If we were to do a Highland Park, would we be able to use it? That would be an even better location, on Oak Street?
Oh, Oak Street, where?
Off of, like, Oak and Sycamore, would we be able to maybe get an easement from the park district and put it on a main strip, instead of, you know, just in one little area that a large portion of the population never drives down?
I think there's more population than you think at that corner, that's the intersection of two major highways connecting Aurora, it connects Batavia, St. Charles, Geneva to the north, I think you're going to get a lot more traffic going there than on Oak Street.
Why do they care when fall cleanup day is?
But they might care about North Aurora days, I mean...
I thought we went through this discussion already, and we've already made the decision to put it where we are.
Yeah, we can, and location was the same, we agreed that was the best location, that's why it's there.
I'm kind of for just going with the original plan and not worrying about moving it, that's...
Me, too.
If it costs 15, did you say 15,000 to 18,000 possible with the slab to move it, and 30,000 without the slab?
They're saying 5,000 to 10,000 to move it, and then 3,000 to 5,000 for the slab itself. So if you do the math, it'd be 8,000 to 15,000 would be the cost to build the slab movable, and then their projected cost to move it in the future. And I can check if that includes...
I think that estimate's a moving target.
Of course, I mean, if it's 20 years from now, it's...
It's probably on the low side in Lake Towsen.
Right.
I think leave it there and have the developer, you know, work that into town center area or something that's nice, you know, architectural looked at.
Well, one of the things that staff mentioned is, okay, so you talk about the development going in at 56 and 31 in the future possibly, we're creating a lot of, I don't know what the word you want to call it, buzz, or we're trying to get people to come down to the State Street corridor, we're trying to have more events down by the river, we're trying to bring people down there, there's going to be probably some form of a uniform sign plan at some point. Tuscan Associates actually had designed that for us as part of the Riverfront Park designs, that we start directionally signing people down into this area, with our work in the Silo Park area in the next year. So there is the idea that we're creating a corridor, our village hall sign right now is, it's, not saying that it has to be done anytime soon, but that's out of date as well, so we could always bring that up to match. So there is, and trustee Curtis, the point of the intersection, I 100% agree, Oak Street is a very utilized area. I think the board had selected 56 and 31, because it's roughly 26,000 cars a day on that street.
To that point, couldn't we just work with the fire department and use some of their land? It's basically 250 feet down from where the sign is.
There's no guarantee that the fire department's going to be there forever either, so, you know, I think it's...
It's not on a corner, I mean, you're getting double traffic there being on a corner.
Right, where it's at, at the corner...
So the police department, I mean, we just have so many other sites that I think we should be looking at, instead of one that we know we want to redevelop, we know we actually want that sign to have to be taken down at some point.
Yeah, the police department would be the other option.
We have no idea what kind of a development's going to go there, or how they're going to build it, or, you know, whether, we have no idea what the future is there, other than what we'd like to see, but, you know, what they come in and design may be completely different than we have in our minds now.
The only thing about, I agree with you, Laura, about the police department is a solution, it's a permanent fixture. The only problem is, I don't think it gets the visibility, not everybody in North Aurora drives by the police department every day, but I, almost everybody might drive by that corner, going one way, east-west, or north-south through the village.
How often do you drive down this way if you don't have a board meeting?
Every single day, because our kids go to school on the east side.
The other thing is, you know, we're talking about the police station, we're talking about moving the gazebo down there, we're talking about possibly putting up our other element that we had on the end of the activity center, so there are other things we would like to put down there, we've discussed putting down there, but, you know, I, we've discussed this, I'm, I feel that we agreed upon this, all seven of us, to put it where it is. Now, maybe all seven of us weren't in favor of that, of where we're talking about, but I think the majority were, so I, as far as I'm concerned, I think we should not talk about whether we're going to do it, but whether or not you want it movable or not, and that's our discussion.
What I think I can do is, I can go back with the builder and see if I can figure out some value engineering where we can cover the cost, maybe build a slab just to protect ourselves, but at the same token, leave it in the same spot, and build it with the same materials.
Yeah, if you can get it done for free, that would be great.
But either way, the direction I'm hearing from the board, the majority is to keep it...
I like the look of the sign, I like the place of the sign, I like the idea of the sign, I think it's a good idea, I don't see why we have to think about moving it. By the time it's going to be moved, and who knows, in the future, who's ever on the board then might want a completely different design, for all we know. So I say we just go ahead like it is, or if you can get the slab built for a nominal fee or nothing, that would be even better idea, I suppose, so.
Okay.
That's my position on it.
And I know Mr. Gately wants to, wants to see it where the way it's planned, I don't know, but it just seems to me like we need to move ahead and get it done.
All right, thank you.
Item number four, Mr. Laskowski.
Yes, Mayor, this item is the Second Amendment to the Verizon lease agreement. If you recall, this summer, we painted the water tower, and at that time, we had to remove all the telecommunications equipment at the top of that tower. When Verizon inspected that equipment, they realized that that would be a good time for them to add additional equipment. We do get additional rent for any equipment that they add to that area as we rent the space on the tower. This item is before you, because it is actually an extension of the lease term agreement from, and it adds another five years to the lease agreement in order for Verizon to realize their return on their investment in their infrastructure. So at this time, it's just an informative item, the staff is recommending the approval of this amendment.
Yeah, it sounded like a good win-win to me, so I think that's a good idea.
Any other comments? Okay, you got your, and item number five is yours also, John.
Yes, Mayor, this item is the, this item is about the proposals for snow and ice removal services throughout the village. We received, this is one service that I think Public Works is really committed to providing excellent service to the community. This is a service we provide access to the residents and the business owners in winter time, to get to the road network, to get to, get them to their destinations, and also allows our emergency services to respond quickly to events they need to. So for those reasons, I'm interested in getting the board's opinion on the two proposals that we did receive for these services. When we put out the proposals, I identified different criteria for each of the firms to provide information for. So one of the criteria that we found were important were the equipment that the contractor would be using, the response time they could get to, how quickly they could get to our village, if they were using subcontractors, the flexibility of responding to various storm events, the hourly rates that they would propose for their equipment, and then the references that they used to get a better understanding of what kind of services they provide. So a little bit about the contract itself, it would be a three-year contract, the village would have the option to opt out of it in writing, with a 30-day notice to the additional party, or to the other party. With the three-year term, each year, we gave the option of the contractor to increase their rate if they chose to do so. So if, we were hoping that we'd get better rates by, in the first year or the latter years, just by giving them the opportunity to offer an escalator. Taking a look at each one of those criteria individually, starting with kind of the hourly rates, what we realized when we took a look at those hourly rates, Tri-County Excavating, who is one of the, who submitted a proposal, is offering a 3% escalator each of the years. Langton Group, who, and I should say, Tri-County Excavating's from Aurora, Langton Group is from Woodstock, Illinois. Langton Group and the prices that they offered were going to be held after the first year, so year one and two would have the same price, and then they increased their price by piece of equipment. So it wasn't necessarily 3% across the board, it was just on how they felt that piece of equipment would respond. When we took a look at the hourly rates a little more closely, it became apparent that the Langton Group was providing lower rates of, on their equipment for their service. However, in order to get a really good understanding of what this meant to the village, what we decided to do was kind of simulate a snowstorm event. So over the last two years, we've collected data on, well, I should say, over the last 10 years or so, we've collected data on every snow event that we've had, each day, how many pieces of equipment were used on it, the hours it was used, and then we could translate that into a cost per storm. So what we did is, we looked at the last two storms, or the last two years' worth of storms, and when we looked at that, we determined that for the 2016, 2017 snowstorms from December of 2016 to March of 2017, Tri-County provided a cost that would equate to $66,492. The Langton Group, using the hourly rates that they would have provided, the same snow event would have been $62,717. So knowing that all storm events in all years aren't equal, we took another look, just to see another year for comparison, in that scenario... In, in that scenario, we found that Tri-County provided a, a cost for the yearly service that would have equated to $81,000 and Langton Group, again, came under at $75,837. So, strictly looking at only a cost comparison, it looked like Langton Group was about 6% cheaper on a yearly basis than, than Tri-County was. So, then considering that proposals aren't necessarily solely based on cost, we decided to do our due diligence and take a look at the other criteria. So, when we started looking at equipment, we realized that each contractor did have about the same equipment offered. So, that was a criteria that we felt was even. The response time was something we took a really close look at because in the proposal, we required the contractor to get to North Aurora within one hour to respond to that event. So, the thing that had concerned us about the Langton Group's proposal is that Woodstock, Illinois is over an hour from North Aurora. So, we're wondering how that they would comply with the criteria. And I had a conversation with the owner of that company and he told me that he also responds to snowstorms out in Glenview, which is about an hour and a half away from him, and he has that hour and a half time to get there as well. And the way he responds to these snow events is he relies on a meteorological service. So, somebody from the National Weather Service or whatever service he's using contacts him a couple hours in advance, notifies him that snow's coming, and at that time, he'll deploy his vehicles to get a jump on, on the snowstorm. In addition, he indicated that any drivers that he does have in the area that may live closer to the North Aurora area, he would have them deployed to our area to make sure that he can meet that response time. In contrast, Tri-County is in Aurora. They have a 15-minute response time, usually on the high end, and for that, it could be a little bit more reliable than relying on the weather service. Another criteria we looked at was the subcontractors and the, and the company's uses of subcontractors. The reason we felt that was important was because if there's one company that may have 40 different trucks, but they all may be run by a different independent contractor, that, that contractor may not have control over all his subs. And so, we wanted to make sure that we had dedication and commitment from these companies to service North Aurora. And so, we asked for a list of the subcontractors that the companies would be using. Langton Group had all of their own equipment, so it wasn't going to be an issue from them. Tri-County had listed two or three different companies for subcontractors. After speaking with the street superintendent, he said that Tri-County generally handles the majority of these snow events on their own and only calls in subcontractors when absolutely necessary. One of the other factors was just the flexibility. We took a look at, do they have the ability to handle not only the small storms, but the large storm events? So, is their equipment and their inventory capable of handling it? We, we felt that both, both companies did have this ability. One of the final criteria we looked at was just collecting their references. We've worked with Tri-County in the past. I haven't directly. This is going to be my first winter here in North Aurora. The, the response I've had from staff in the Public Works Department is that the Tri-County Excavating is easy to work with and they've had a good relationship with the village in the past. And any, any service questions, if, if somebody struck a mailbox, which will happen from time to time on snowplow routes, they would be conscientious about it, contact our street superintendent and let them know that there was an issue and they'd handle it immediately. When we contacted the references of the Langton Group, we, we were a little concerned when we spoke to Glenview. They had indicated that the, they did have a little bit of a communication issue when they initially started in Glenview between the street superintendent and, and the Langton Group, trying to get things started out initially and get all the routes, or get their responses coordinated. They said it got ironed out over time, but there was that initial learning curve that they had to compete against. Glenview indicated that they didn't perform any snow removal on actual routes. Their responsibilities in Glenview was in parking lots, sidewalks, and municipal facilities. So, they were, they don't have a lot of experience on doing snowplow routes on, on streets, on roads and streets. They have the parking lot experience and, and for that, the individual who provided the reference said he was, he was a little hesitant to recommend them as a reference to do the type of work that we're offering, that we're requesting right now. The, he went on to say that there was a little bit of a difficulty when they were handling the larger storm events. They had a little bit harder time deploying additional equipment when it was needed if the event got more severe over time. But, so all in all, I, I think that was a little bit of a concern when we spoke to the village of Glenview, so.
John, how did you get these figures from comparing Tri-County with Langton Group for, for 215 and 216 and 216 and 17? Granted, the 81,000 that we gave Tri-County, we would know, but how did you figure the Langton Group's cost?
Sure. So, the, the way that was calculated is I actually used the rates that each company provided for next year's services.
Oh, okay.
So, it would be a comparison of those two values. And so, and, and to, I guess to further dive into the hourly rates, when we were looking at those rates, there's really probably only four pieces of equipment that the village uses on a regular basis. So, it was really that those pieces of equipment that dictated the overall cost of snow and ice removal services. So, even though the majority of the Langton Group's hourly rates were less than what Tri-County's were, the pieces of equipment that we choose to use on a regular basis were closer to being even than they would be. So, in summary, I guess what I'm kind of looking for in direction from the board is just your thoughts on maybe saving the cost of, of 6% or so a year versus maybe a little bit more risk that we'd be incurring by selecting a company that may not be referenced to be as reliable as, as Tri-County.
I want to just chime in real quick before we have this discussion. John and I and Brian Richter, our Public Works Superintendent, all sat down and looked at this and racked our brains and dragged Bill in on the conversation every now and then. This is about as 50/50 as it got. On one hand, the village can save some money, maybe not a huge amount of money, but a good amount of money. But then you run the risk of having a service, one of our core services, plowing, to a group that's never really plowed street routes before, when we, unlike some villages, rely heavily on contractors to do main routes for us. I don't know the percentage off the top of my head. I think it's about 20 or 30% of all the routes in North Aurora are done by our contractor. So, John and I, before we, because of the timing of this, we knew we had to get it to the board no later than November 6th. So, we decided that it would be the best idea to bring the board into the conversation to determine if you're willing to take the chance with the new company and see how it works. Now, the downside of that is, if they don't work out and we give them notice, you're basically stuck with them for the year no matter what because you're not going to get them in in December, give them 30 days' notice, and then try to find someone who's just going to plow February. So, you know, you're going to have to try to work through that first year no matter what. On the flip side of that, you might save 5, 6, 7, $8,000. So, that's what we're talking about tonight.
At some point, this becomes a public safety issue and you can't put a price on that. I like the reliability. I like the fact they know the roads, you know, I, I want my roads cleared ASAP. I'm sure everybody else does too. And I think the pricing is so close that, you know, I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer at this point. Get the roads done quick, fast, and reliably or save 6%. I mean, I'd take the, the 6% hit.
Yeah, I, I agree with Laura on this one completely. I think over the last, since I've been on the board, I've had nothing but rave reviews about how efficient North Aurora clears their streets during snowstorms and that. And we've been real happy with this company and it's a good, well-working company. And what we'd be buying is kind of a pig in the poke with the other company and especially with the references that they don't even have experience with roads. It's just parking lots and sidewalks. I do the same thing, so.
They won the contract this year in Oswego, but I don't think they've started yet. So, when, when our contract is done over the next couple of years, definitely revisit that and see how it goes with other contractors at that time.
Langton has won a contract with us, Oswego?
This year, I believe, they start.
Langton had won a contract, it's, I understand that they won with us, Oswego. We reached out to them for a reference, but weren't able to get ahold of them at that time. They also did win a route to do with the village of Glenview. However, the street superintendent there chose not to award that route to them because he didn't feel that they were ready at this time.
I agree with Laura and with Mike. Trying to save a couple nickels when this is our core, one of our core services just doesn't seem very wise.
And it sounds like their contracts are all lower. So, I mean, if you only have a limited amount of people and you have contracts all scattered, you're not going to be their first choice. Someone else is going to, you know, I, I agree too. What, Laura?
I, I just have one question, Jen. So, when, when we call them out, do we tell them what equipment to bring out or they pick what equipment, or how's that work? Do they pick the big dollar ones or the little plows or how's that work?
Brian typically, Brian Richter, the street superintendent, typically directs the contractor on what vehicles he needs to do the job and which ones he believes that in his experience could plow the roads most efficiently.
So, then, I guess, a couple of questions. Just, our roads are great. I mean, nobody can argue. You know, the towns of the south and the north, they, they have to catch up to us. I mean, they're, they do a great job, so. So, then on the, I know a couple of years ago, we picked up another employee, Steve, and we talked about how that would kind of maybe cut down on some of the subwork that we have. Is that happening? And then my other question would be, do we do the roads up to a certain point, like do the whole village and we call them in at some other point? Or they have their routes and no matter what, they go to that area or how does that work?
They, they have a route with us, so their trucks help us on Randall Road and our guys are deployed to their routes within subdivisions and then.
I think they do West Orchard, don't they? That as well.
Yes.
I just wonder if there's a way to make up some of the savings if we have that extra employee because I, I remember that was a.
We did.
Big push that this guy would be able to plow and, and save us some money on subwork, so.
But we lost that employee. So, what happened was when we hired another Public Works employee, when we reconfigured Public Works, Brian Richter became superintendent, we didn't replace the foreman position in the Public Works Department. We left it open. So, therefore, we had seven, he was foreman, so we had seven laborers, and well, six and a foreman, that were union employees that were allowed to plow. Brian, as superintendent, can't plow anymore, so we only have six laborers. So, we technically lost that person.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, 6% or, you know, it's not a big, that big a deal. And I think, you know, snow plowing, like repairing sidewalks, it's something people see every day. They go outside and go, boy, this stinks or it's great. And for that amount of difference, I, like everybody else up here, I think it's an easy decision, you know? And they've been really taking care of us, like Tri-County. I mean, I'm sure you call and they, and even other areas, construction during the summer, if you need something, they, they've been really loyal, I guess. So, it's comforting to know that they have 12 years, you know, experience and having somebody come in an hour and a half away and hoping they show up and like trustee Martinez said, you know, they got other places. And I saw in there, they said they would pull people from other places, but that's might be what they're telling the next town, that they'll pull people from North Aurora to take care of them, so. Yeah, I like, I think Tri-County's a good decision.
I think trustee Carroll hit it on the head. It's our core, core service that we provide for the, for the entire community that we're paying outside for. So, I think it's important to redo it with someone that we can rely on, we have relied on and think we continue, continue to rely on. Anything else?
Yeah, for the record, I put this last on the agenda thinking it would have the hardest discussion of the night, saved that one for last, and I was completely wrong. So, there you go. Can't always plan for everything.
Hey, are you paying for dinner? Is that what you're saying?
Is that what he said?
Motion to, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I propose we're out of here.